Call this meeting to order of the James City County Board of Directors for a special meeting. Good afternoon, Mr. Powell.
Good afternoon.
Could you please call her on?
Mr. Eisenhour.
Here.
Mr. McGlinnan.
Here.
Ms. Larson.
Here.
Mr. Hippel.
Here.
Ms. Sadler.
Our discussions today, fiscal year 2024 budget, Mr. Powell.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I've presented the draft proposed FY24 budget at your April 11th meeting. The purpose of today's meeting is to entertain any questions or comments you may have on the proposed budget.
Or anything from anyone? No, good. Well, no action is required today.
Okay.
No closed session today.
No closed session.
Okay. So, well, we're quick. So, we'll look for a motion to adjourn until 9:00 a.m. April 28, 2023, for the board retreat.
Correct. And then the budget adoption will be at your regular meeting on May 9.
May 9, okay. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Powell.
Call this meeting, James City County Board, su vice of business, meeting to order on April 25, 2023, 1:01 p.m. Roll call, please, sir.
Ms. Sadler.
Here.
Mr. Eisenhour.
Here.
Mr. McGlinnan.
Here.
Ms. Larson.
Here.
Mr. Hippel.
Here. All right. I need a motion to amend the agenda to add an additional closed session, items to discuss on the disposition of public-held real estate properties. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Roll call, please, sir.
Sadler.
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour.
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
All right. We'll move into presentations. VDOT Project Pipeline Route 1A and an update. Ms. Tucker. How do, sir?
Hello, sir. Members of the board, it's a pleasure to be here. I think the last time I was here was last summer. And today, we wanted to give the board an update. We went through an extended public engagement period for the study, and we just wanted to give you an update, kind of tell you where we're at, and hopefully reach a agreement on some of the next steps moving forward. Do I just click here to... Board? Great. Okay. All right. So, I'm going to sort of set the stage, and I'm going to turn it over to Danielle with Kimberly Hornet Associates. 199 corridor was originally selected as in the first round of the Project Pipeline program, which is a study program that the Commonwealth Transportation Board stood up about two years ago to assist localities and regions in the state in providing resources to address the worst problems sort of throughout the Commonwealth through the Vtrans statewide transportation plan. And Route 199 was one of the quarters that was flagged in the Hampton Roads District is having a number of congestion and safety issues. We went through a multi-phase effort. The first phase was really to understand the issues and the problems, to look at the data and understand what were the problems and challenges facing the corridor. Once we understood that, we rolled into a second phase, which is developing some of the concepts, the alternatives, what can we do to move the needle on a performance standpoint, and engage the public. Did we understand the problem correctly? What do you think of these various solutions that will hopefully make the quarter operate better? And it was during that phase that we kind of called an audible on the study after a meeting with the board here in the county, as well as the city board, because we got a lot of feedback from the public, and we wanted to do an extended public engagement period. So, we went into sort of a Phase Two Extended, because we'd gotten some concerns and questions about some of the alternatives that we were presenting at the various intersections within the study area. So, we held two community meetings with the neighborhood associations at the Stryker Center. We had two open house public meetings, one at James City County at Laurel Lane Elementary School, as well as one at the Williamsburg Community Building. And we used that opportunity to talk to the surrounding citizens that live in the various neighborhoods, as well as some of the business owners. I know many of the folks from this board attended those meetings as well. And we were able to refine the concepts and address many, not all, of the concerns that we heard from the public. And so, where we're at now is a decision or inflection point of, do we move forward with the original plan Phase Three, which is doing a more detailed operational analysis, getting a much better handle on the constructibility issues, the right-of-way impacts, the cost of the project, and refine an investment strategy that the city and county can collectively use to go after funding, whether it's at the federal, state, or regional level. And so, what we wanted to do is present sort of the feedback we heard from the public, as well as the refinements we made to the concepts, and do that both for the county and the city, to see whether or not there's interest in moving forward to this third phase, which would really start to put more detail on the projects. And here towards the end, we'll get into some of the project timeline. You know, many of the improvements that you're going to hear today aren't things that would, if they were funded in the next year or two, we wouldn't see construction until well over a decade from now, just how long the project development process takes for the six-year improvement program. So, that's sort of baked into our analysis and our understanding that, you know, the problems that we see there today with no investments will likely continue to deteriorate over the next 10 to 15 years. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Danielle. She's going to walk you through the process that we went through and the refinements to the alternatives, and then we'll sort of wrap up with any questions that you have.
Welcome, Danielle.
Good to see you all again. And I know we were together in the fall of last year before we went to the community to walk through each of the improvement options. And so, what I'll walk through is the feedback we heard from the public in the fall of 2020. Our team worked closely with VDOT and the city, and also the county, to develop content and prepare for that in-person meeting, for those in-person meetings that Chad spoke about. We developed that 10-minute narrated presentation that each of you had an opportunity to review, and project meeting boards that helped really articulate what we were trying to do at each of the intersections. And so, all of that project material was available on the Project Pipeline website. And as a result of that effort, we also, as Chad mentioned, we were in the community at community meetings at the City of Williamsburg Stryker Center, where we had over 55 attendees that Wednesday before our formal public open house meetings, where we received, over the course of two different meetings, over 100 people attended from the public. And that created an opportunity for us to, our project team, to be present with members from the community, to walk through what we're anticipating, some of the impacts to be along the 199 corridor, and then walk through in detail what the proposed improvements were. And we found that that was a really well-used time, because we had people walk away better understanding the concept, well, the concepts presented. While maybe not everyone was on board with them, there was an understanding of what the future impacts may be to the quarter if nothing happens, and the safety and congestion issues we were seeking to address. So, in total, after that meeting, we did receive written comments. Some of those written comments were still in opposition to the project. A few of those emails were appreciative feedback from the community thanking us for our time, and people who better understood the concepts. So, at this time, I'm going to walk through each of the three different study areas and explain to you how we took that feedback from the public and made some proposed revisions to the improvements. And as Chad mentioned, we're at a point where, if we were to move forward with this, we will take those improvements to the concepts and develop a full network to analyze the full quarter with the recommended improvements. I'll mention that the final report from Phase One and Two is available on the project website, and the public and you all can review.
Can I just ask one question about that? The dependencies are not available, though. Is that right? Do you have to request those?
Yes, the dependencies are available upon request. They're quite lengthy and a very big file, but if upon request, they can be made available.
Thank you.
So, first, I'll start at the Brookwood Drive intersection, and this is the, the recommended improvement was a through cut, and that's what we presented to the, to the public. The image shown on the screen is, is the exact same image that was presented to the public. What you'll notice is that there are callouts, the numbers 1 through 5 are recommended improvements to the concepts based on feedback we received from the public. And what I will do is call out a few of those changes that we would propose we make to this concept should we advance forward. Before we get into the details, I'll remind you that a through cut is restricting the through movement across 199. There was some confusion before that left-term movements would be restricted. All left-term movements are prohibited under this concept. Or allowed, or, or, I'm allowed, I'm sorry, permitted. Excuse me. So, a couple, a couple things I'll call out to you. In the, the number one that's shown there on the graphic is a recommendation, a recommendation for flashing signs to be installed in advance of Brookwood Drive on the westbound 199 direction, so that drivers or motorists are alerted of congestion downstream before they hit the intersection. Some feedback we received from the public regarding the turnaround points, the U-turn turnaround points, was that perhaps we consider removing them, and that's something that we would take into consideration as we move forward. And any U-turns would be executed at a downstream intersection. There was an interest to include some bicycle connectivity from the Holly Carriage, Holly Hills Carriage Homes to Jamestown Road via Woodmere. And so, that's something that our project team would explore, the right-of-way impacts and what that would mean for property if we were to create a connection from that community over to Jamestown Road. Something that VDOT has already taken in advanced, has, have acted on, is a tree clearing along 199 in the westbound direction, along 199. So, the trees have been cleared, some of that vegetation that affected site distance. So, the site distance is improved as you approach Brookwood Drive. And lastly, we will maintain all motorized, non-motorized connectivity along Lake Powell Road. That was a concern we heard from residents. They want to make sure that they're able to walk and bike along Lake Powell Road, and that that access is not restricted. And that's something that we will maintain should we move forward with this concept. As we move to Jamestown Road, I'll remind you that the proposed alternative was considered a bow tie. And before we get into the details of that, I will let you know that the north in this concept is to the left of the page, and 199 is from the bottom to the top. So, our main quarter is from the bottom of the page to the top of the page, and Jamestown Road is from left to right. We're proposing two roundabouts with this concept, and left turns from Jamestown Road would be restricted. A few things that I will call out here for highlighting improvements based on public feedback. Would be the number one there, the roundabout. We would consider shifting the roundabout at Woodmere Drive. We heard from residents who are concerned about the impacts to local properties. And in the next phase of evaluation, we would identify the most optimal location for that roundabout to minimize impacts to local properties, and consider a potential third lane, fourth, fourth approach on that northern roundabout at Woodmere Drive. Let's see, a couple other things I'll mention here would be a transit shelter. Currently, there are two transit bus stops on the east side and the west side of Jamestown Road, and only a shelter is provided on the east side. We would introduce or explore the opportunity of providing a shelter on the west side of Jamestown Road. And we're committed to providing, continuing to provide access to cyclists and pedestrians along Route 199, around, along Jamestown Road, excuse me, and enhancing the character and streetscaping aesthetics as part of the design process. So, now I'm going to move on to John Tyler Highway intersection, and I'll remind you that the proposed improvement here was a displaced left concept. And this is where the left-term movements are crossing over in advance of the signal, in advance of the main signal with the signalized intersection. And there was a video that we walked through where the left turns are now crossing over to the opposing side of traffic to eliminate the number of conflicts at that main intersection. At the public meeting, we introduced two different concepts, one with a signal and one with a roundabout. Based on feedback from the public, we have suggested that that roundabout be advanced forward with the proposed improvement, because that was feedback we got from the public. They would prefer us to consider a roundabout. And in considering that roundabout, we will look at the impacts to College Wood to the north of the screen there, the top of the screen. And we would evaluate perhaps an oval-shaped roundabout, or revisit the, the geometrics of that roundabout to make sure that we're minimizing the impacts to property. A couple other things I'll mention here is that flashing signs, as you travel 199 from Monticello and approach John Tyler Highway, we would explore advanced warning signs, so that people know that they should slow down before they enter that 45-mile speed limit, posted speed limit zone. That was based on feedback from the public. And there's a second page of highlights at this location. I'll briefly mention, as we consolidate all three intersections and consider this as a network, we will make sure that the left-turn lanes, or any turn storage bay lanes, are the appropriate length for the future congestion that's forecasted. And we'll maintain, or we'll revisit bicycle and pedestrian connectivity in the Williamsburg Crossing Shopping Center area. There was some interest in some connectivity for that, in that area. As part of this concept, we'll consider that. And the last thing I want to mention for this concept is access management or turn movements from Williamsburg Crossing Shopping Center. As people exit that shopping center and they try to make a left turn onto 199, there's some weaving that happens. And so, we will explore some measures to make sure that safety concerns with that weave is addressed. That was not previously included in the concept. Based on feedback from the public, we would incorporate that. So, that's a highlight of what we would consider and recommend moving forward, some updates to the concept based on the public's feedback from the fall 2020 engagement. And as Chad mentioned, the next steps would be for us to consolidate all of these improvements and evaluate right-of-way impacts, more refined costs, and the operational improvements to the entire quarter, if all, of all three concepts were collectively added together. I'm going to turn it back over to Chad to talk about next steps.
Right. So, where we're at is at a decision point. One of the things you've, you've noted at the state level with the creation of Smart Scale is the state cannot put forth projects anymore. They have to come from a locality, or a regional entity, or a transit agency. And so, it's really important that these concepts be supported locally and regionally moving forward. We certainly have been burned in the past as a state pushing projects that don't have that local and regional support. So, really, there's two options. We can end the study at this point. We've got an understanding of the problems. We have alternatives. We've got some public feedback. And we can explore other, you know, other priorities, study priorities within the Hampton Roads District. The other would be if the county and the city are supportive of continuing on with Phase Three, with the third phase, would be to, you know, indicate such, and we, over the next several, over the next eight to 10 months, would take the study into Phase Three, do more operational and traffic analysis, so you can understand the full benefits of how all three improvements at the three intersections work together, have a better understanding of the cost and the right-of-way impacts. And if the county and city are supportive, you may, you know, decide, if you go with option two, to submit for funding in the next round of Smart Scale, which would begin, application cycle would begin next March. So, that's kind of where we're at. If the board, let's say the, the project were to be successful in the next round of Smart Scale, it would be, get put in the fifth year of the six-year improvement program. You'd have five years before the phase would start. That typically takes a year or two. Then you've got a right-of-way phase. So, with the earliest that you would even, we would be looking at construction where we're actually moving gravel and dirt and doing anything, if all of that were to come to fruition, is sometime around 2033 to 2035 would be when, you know, we would actually be moving forward. But there's obviously a lot of dependencies there. So, I just wanted to sort of lay that out. I'll reiterate what I said the last time when I came here, that not wanting to move forward is a perfectly acceptable option. We certainly want the support of the county and the city before we would be willing to move forward. And if this is something that the county's not comfortable with, you know, we certainly have other, you know, things that we could expend resources and all on moving forward. So, with that, I'm going to let you all ask any questions that you may have about the study. And Danielle, if you want to come back up.
Question for Chad?
So, if, if we say yes, we want to move forward, because if we don't, then it comes to a stop, right? We don't get improvements on 199, which we know we need, or this area. Is there still room for improvement as we go through? Are there some things that you might listen to staff on that we, that we might want to tighten up, or see if there's something, somebody's going to do differently? Or are we completely signing off on exactly what you've presented today?
No, I, I think there would be opportunity in Phase Three for there to continue to be refinements. As you get a better understanding of the right-of-way impacts, as we do additional, any additional public engagement, I would anticipate that there would be things that we would be tweaking moving forward to make it a viable project. So, you wouldn't not necessarily be locking in completely. I mean, with the concept in general of, you know, I mean, with the concept in general of, you know, restricting some movements that allow you to give more time, you know, restrict signal phases and reduce conflict points that you're bringing down congestion and you're bringing down the number of accidents. But certainly refinements, you know, at individual intersections would be, would be something that would be doable in Phase Three.
And then this is way out there, but it has been asked because the, the population is a little bit different, especially when you get to 199 and John Tyler. We now have residents in that area that are very, a little bit closer to 199 that were concerned about what that may be like noise-wise as construction would be taking place even 10 years from now. You know, how much is put into that thought, I mean, with VDOT?
Yeah, I mean, certainly, construction, the level of construction noise, particularly when you're near residential structures, is something that's take, taken into account when phasing the construction and coming up with the construction plan. So you, we, you know, obviously wouldn't want to be next to a residential center, you know, operating heavy equipment in the middle of the night. So I think a lot of this would occur during the day and there would be efforts made to, you know, reduce the sound and noise impacts to the surrounding communities as best, as, you know, as best as possible.
Okay, thank you so much.
So thank you, thank you for coming back and, and presenting the information. I think a lot of people will be relieved to hear that the proposal that you're talking about would not restrict left turn lanes at Brookwood 199. That is absolutely unacceptable to so many people in that area. It's a heavily residential area with an elementary school, with tourist attractions, with an airport, with a lot of senior citizens in a retirement community and a lot of residential development. However, I also did want to ask again a kind of question about process. As I looked at, at section 1.4 of the, of the description of the project pipeline, you list a number of criteria that could be part of the project, but many of which are not. Okay? And it seems to me that there are several on there that really are important, that are not being addressed. And so let me just suggest a couple of things. Tell me if I'm right, I think at the bottom line, you're talking about improving safety by reducing some of the accidents that occur currently in that vicinity and that you are talking about reducing congestion. The congestion reduction, as far as I can tell, is primarily designed to help speed traffic through one, on 199. In fact, in all likelihood, people who are using Jamestown Road or seeking access to Jamestown Road are likely to experience a longer trip if they, in, in many instances, because they will have to go to the right through a roundabout or bowtie or whatever, kind of go across Jamestown Road and then perhaps come around in that direction. And so if somebody's coming from Williamsburg Landing and wants to go to the 7-Eleven, for instance, they're going to have to take a right at Jamestown Road, go through a bowtie, wait for the traffic light to change at Jamestown Road, go across, go through another bowtie or roundabout in order to get to that particular location. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so there's, and, and I think it is important, you know, I just was going through some files the other day. I was on the 2000 study that resulted in, in the last set of revisions to the area. And it, it does seem to me that there isn't the recognition that there was in that earlier study that this is an area that involves significant commercial activity and residential activity. It, it is an area where in fact, I would argue, speed should not be encouraged. And that it's not a bad thing to slow folks down in, in that heavily congested area. And that leads me to another section of, of what's not really being prioritized here. And that's pedestrian and bicycle opportunities and transit. And I think all of those are things that could help address this kind of question. So I, at this point, the, the first question I'd like to raise about it is, would it be possible to revise this in such a way to incorporate some of those values and explore the possibility that with, for instance, the potential of some commercial properties that are not currently being utilized, like the Truist Bank that is right there, was an old, used to be SunTrust. The Realty Building that I think is not fully utilized at this point on the catty corner at, at the Jamestown Road intersection. Question of whether there might be an alternate or better location for a convenience store than where the, the 7-Eleven is right now. That's a, a constant problem in terms of people making left-hand turns into that 7-Eleven from places where they're not supposed to. And so there might be some opportunities there by acquiring some property to in fact, provide for access to transit, to provide safer tra, uh, foot traffic across that intersection by having perhaps a, a traffic lane that would go from Jamestown Road onto 199 eastbound and provide an island for pedestrians to wait before crossing over. Is that something that could be within the scope of consideration?
Yes, and I'll, I'll do my best to address your, your feedback and questions. And then I'll, you know, let Daniel fill in any gaps. I, I think across the board at all three intersections, bicycle and pedestrian accommodations were definitely part of the, the package and part of the thing that was being presented. There are a number of trails that planned across 199. We incorporated that at James, John Tyler intersection. The way to look at the, how we're balancing improving congestion or reducing congestion while also improving safety is we're not increasing the ma, average max speed. We're really trying to reduce the delay of just sitting at the light. So while the average speed goes up, it's only going up because there's less time of just sitting there stopped at the light. By reducing those signal phases, you're able to give more time to movements and have folks sitting at those, at those intersections less. Now, it is true, there's a little bit of a trade-off for some of the movements. Whereas before you would go straight and, or you would, you would make a left. Now you're making a right. But typically, you're making that right during that through movement. And by the time you go around the roundabout and come down, if they're timed correctly, you're getting a green light. And we do minimize the extra time that you're spending at those, at those intersections. We definitely, I think our concepts were very much focused on the surrounding commercial and residential in that in the past, it's been suggested that, well, we'll just build an interchange there. And if you build an interchange there, you're essentially going to take all of the existing businesses and all that are in each of the quadrants of the intersection. So it was how do we get this balance between not impact, reducing impacts to surrounding community, including business community, while also, you know, making some strides and improving the performance through the intersection and reducing some of those conflict points that cause the crashes that you see at the intersection. And I'll turn it over to Daniel if she's got anything to add.
Yeah, I, I wanted to mention that throughput on 199 is what we would consider, like the, the, the opportunity for us to serve the demand that's forecasted along 199. Our, our forecast year shows queues extending very, at great lengths. And so we're looking to accommodate or be able to process the amount of vehicles through, through 199, not necessarily speed them up.
Right. So, so yes, but the cost to that is a reduced benefit, a, a reduced positive experience for traffic traveling on Jamestown Road.
I would say that the safety along Jamestown Road would be improved and addressed because currently the amount of vehicles on, on, on Jamestown Road is forecasted to increase as well. And so making those left turns without.
I, I suspect, and, and, you know, I, I, like many of the board members, I, I travel that intersection multiple times a day. And it just strikes me that you may be underestimating the, the kind of impact that that traffic circle is going to have in terms of building congestion on Jamestown Road. There is, during those rush hours, you know, there are long queues to make that left-hand turn already. Those are now going to be directed across the street to, to right-hand turns that will also, you know, experience some problems. So let me move on to another question that might relate to this as well. It does strike me that if, if we are anticipating significant increased traffic volume on 199 and if one of the VTAN rationales for proposing, for studying roadway is to increase access to interstates and primary roads, that we could consider some possibilities of how to direct traffic from north of John Tyler onto 199 west, headed to the interstate, which has now been widened to Newport News and Hampton. And probably in many instances, would be faster for folks at Long Hill Road, at Richmond Road to get onto eastbound I-64 than traveling all the way down through the middle of that residential and commercial area where there are traffic signals.
I see, I, I see what you're saying. I think there's a couple of things. One, the proximity of the study area to the, the 199 intersection to the west of the city. So there's a little psychology that goes into play that folks don't like to go away from their destination for very long to then turn around. And so the number of people that you would be able to get to go west on 199 up to the 64 and then take 64 east is certainly something we could model in the travel demand model. But I don't suspect you would be able to move the needle that much. Folks are just instinctually going to, that's too far of a, of a bypass.
We do recognize that the traffic volume on that section of 199 is much lower than the section below John Tyler Highway. Yes?
On the north side of 199? Yes, there is, there's a significant number of folks coming from one, coming from John Tyler Highway south up to 199 and making that right. That's probably one of the heaviest moves within the study corridor.
And I, I guess I'm just wondering why we couldn't do something like we see in many areas where there are lighted signs that give a minute comparison for how long it would take to get, say, to Newport News from, by going one direction on 199 versus the other. I suspect you'd get a pretty close minute count, maybe even an advantage to going to the west side of 199. So, so if that's not something that would be considered, you know, I, I guess I'd wonder about, you know, what's the objective here? If it's ju, if, if it's not to address a problem that we anticipate increasing, you know, I, I just have a hard time seeing how folks traveling Jamestown Road are going to experience much benefit at all from this change.
Yeah, well, that's, that would be a question that we would be able to dive deeper into in Phase Three, which is be able to provide this board and the city council with, you know, actual metrics of through, throughout the quarter. This is the benefit to this movement versus that movement. This is how much travel time you would save. I will say, we were very deliberate in, we were not prioritizing one, we're only worried about improving traffic on 199. We were very much trying to balance the needs of 199 with the needs of the side street and have a balanced approach to where, because without any improvement, you're going to have both the 199 mainline as well as the side street. Performance will decrease gradually over time. And so we are looking, the improvements here would have benefits to both 199 and the side streets.
I'll also mention, not just from an operation standpoint, but as congestion worsens over the future, however many years, the likelihood of accidents will increase with, with just more volume. And so we're, we're coupling our operational analysis with safety. And so those.
Any accident is, is one accident too many. Granted that, but the, the impact of accident reduction, as I could read in your study, was not overwhelming. And at a cost of $33 million, as was your initial projection, my understanding is that all those costs have increased radically since that time. I, I just wonder about, you know, why there isn't some, some thought given to meeting some of the other objectives that typically would be involved in evaluating proposals of this kind?
I would, I definitely agree with the, the transit, you know, element. That's an element that I think we could potentially look at. I don't, I believe there is a couple of existing transit routes that go through the intersection, but there is limited transit accessibility. So that would be something that we would need to work with the, the regional and local transit provider here to see if that's something that's on the books. And can we accommodate that in some way within the footprint of the improvements that we're making here for bus stops and things of that nature? So to your point, I don't think there's any one silver bullet. I do think we need to take a holistic approach. We could look at the travel time savings of folks that are coming north on John Tyler, making a left. Would it, would it make sense? I think if the, the travel times are too close, then folks are going to say, well, that's going to add four miles to my trip. So I'm just going to take, you know, but I think it's something we could potentially look at.
Well, in, in 10 years, we're likely to see a dramatic increase in the number of autonomous-driven vehicles as well. And, and so presumably, that's something that could be actually, you know, provided as a direct, you know, direction recommendation in an autonomous vehicle, I would think.
Now, that, that is something that folks in our realm have talked about for five or 10 years. Like what is going to be the impact of autonomous? And I think the best answer I've, I've heard was from Kathy McGee, who's now the, the deputy commissioner at VDOT, who used to work at the research council. And that is, we don't know what the impacts are going to be. You would anticipate some efficiencies from, as more and more autonomous vehicles are out there. You know, folks are, you're able to have a higher density of traffic and less accidents. And so your congestion would go down. But on the flip side, you could send your 12-year-old to a friend's house in an autonomous vehicle. You don't, you now no longer have to have a driver's license. So it opens up an entire realm of mobility to folks. And so would that offset the benefits that you would see from an improvement? And the, the fact of the matter is, it's something we've debated within the transportation realm for ever since, you know, the beginning of my career, almost 20 years ago. And until it happens, I don't think we have a good understanding of how autonomous vehicles are going to affect the transportation network, which is one of the reasons why, within the pipeline, there's a lot of focus on how do we make the existing system more efficient as opposed to building interchanges, adding through lanes, doing those things that may not be needed 20 or 30 years from now? If we can make the corridor 25% more efficient, we can reduce crashes 25% and get improved performance over the next 15, 20 years, then hopefully by then we'll have realized what the benefits of some of the emergency, emerging technologies will be.
So I, I guess the only thing I, I would say is that I, I'm not sensing a lot of openness to, to change that would reflect what might be the conditions on the ground 10 years from now, when you indicate that funding might be available for this. And that, you know, that, that's a source of concern for me. I don't quite understand why we wouldn't, you know, you're absolutely right. We don't know what's, what's going to happen. But to assume that it's not going to be of, of some kind of benefit, you know, is something that would have to be reevaluated, I would hope, over time. But how far will we be down the road before that happens? Literally. I, I've, I've said my piece.
We've got a few things. So what I'm hearing is there, there's some openings for change as we move through this process as far as maybe from the citizens or from the board or from staff that, hey, this we feel is going to work better. Can you analyze that and, and see if this is, this doesn't, this is a concept, but it's not set in stone as of right now?
Yeah, like one of the things that Daniel mentioned was the location of the roundabout on the north side there of Route Five and 199. That would be something we would be able to work with the surrounding community to figure out. You know, how do we impact? to work with the surrounding community to figure out, you know, how do we impact, how do we minimize impacts and address the concerns that we're hearing? How do we incorporate bicycles and pedestrians along the corridors and at the intersections? Those are all details that at this point, we now kinda know at a high level, but we would be able to provide much more specificity moving forward, getting into the design. And of course, anything, you know, if, if we get to the right way, you know, if this project were to get selected for funding, the number of years that transpire between that and the design process that you go through, even within that design process, there's gonna be opportunity for tweaks of things that come to bear that aren't apparent to us now. I know I received feedback from, I think at the last meeting I was here, from the Garden Club, had spent quite a bit of money along 199 on beautification, and there was concerns about that would be something we definitely, as part of this Phase Three, in moving forward with that project, wanna wanna make sure we address that. Because they had put up a lot of money to, for plantings and trees and flowers that y'all see every day when you drive through that corridor that we certainly wouldn't wanna rip out and not replace. We would wanna make sure that we can relocate them and ensure that the beauty of the corridor is maintained. So there's certainly the ability to make tweaks, continue to make tweaks to the concepts moving forward into Phase Three.
And I'll mention, I'll mention that in Phase Three, in addition to what Chad mentioned, Phase Three was where we would refine the concepts, working closely with staff from the city and the county. There's also that line item, if selected for smart scale funding, there's a official design public hearing that will happen. So the public will have another opportunity to see what the final design is and, and give, provide feedback at the preliminary engineering design phase as well.
And I know with, working with HR tech, and there's never enough money, there's never enough funding. And if you get out of line in the funding process, and you're, what, we'll look at 2040 to get back in the loop and, and try to do anything. And if we can do it then, and of course, the 33 million in 10 years from now is probably gonna be 133 million. The rest of things are going crazy. So I think, you know, that's an important thing to remember that, you know, maybe this is not the perfect scenario right now as it sits, and it's not exactly everything, but it does relieve congestion and there's safety issues. And I think anybody who drives down that section of 199 gets so frustrated at certain times that, and, and this will help, because it's just gonna get worse. It's not gonna get better. If we don't do something, it's just gonna slowly deteriorate into something that nobody's gonna be able to get through there, and we're gonna have them at this board meeting saying, would y'all let that go by when we had the opportunity? I think for the general public, you know, you're talking about speed and that sort of thing. We're not talking about speed as far as vehicles going faster. We're talking about speed as far as sitting in line, waiting for a light to change, waiting for other traffic to move. You're getting through the intersection at a faster pace, not speed-wise, at a faster pace, meaning you're not waiting as long in that section while you're going through it. So that's, you know, some people will think, well, we don't need it to go any faster. We're going too fast in that section now. And, and John made a good point of, you know, that, that definitely we don't wanna up the speed and, you know, and I think the general public would think, oh, are we upping the speed, you know, and not realizing John's saying, we're not sitting in line as long, we're moving through the intersection faster. So I guess we don't have a vote or anything else to take on this. I think it's more of a, do we support moving this project forward, meaning, you know, at this phase so that we can get smart scale? Because if we don't move on smart scale within a couple of months and get next year, we're out of the loop. And I can tell you, when you're out of loop, another community is getting that loop and getting that, that funding. So I'm, I'm in favor of the project myself.
I had a follow-up question.
Yes, ma'am.
What, when is the city taking this? When, when do you go there?
We meet with the city in May 8th.
And if the city say the consensus that this board is, yes, let's move forward, knowing we've got some concerns out there, but the city says, no, thank you, where are we then?
That's a, that's a very, very good question. Hopefully, it doesn't come to that. The reality is, this, this project skirts both jurisdictions. And so we really need to have both jurisdictions. We wanna make sure that the leadership and the, of both parties are on board. I mean, I think it would, it would introduce a risk to the state moving forward if the city were definitely against it and the county, because ultimately, the support of both would be needed for that project to be able to move forward. Because it, both jurisdictions have jurisdiction, if you will, in the case of this, this study corridor.
Okay.
Are you okay with moving forward?
Not me. And, and I would say that, that doesn't mean I'm not in favor of moving forward with something, but what I would want is an assurance that there's more opportunity for significant adjustment of the proposal than what we're seeing today.
I am. I, I would, I would hope that the comments, though, that Supervisor McGlinnan has made would be taken into consideration. He has a lot of experience, especially in that, that area, because it was part of his district for a very long time. Some of it still is, so.
Pardon me, I'm okay with you guys getting in line for the money, if you will. I, I share a lot of John's concerns about, in Phase Three, of having more flexibility to really look at this maybe with a very much finer microscope than we have so far. I, I'm one of those people who has recently made the decision, because of where I live, that when I'm headache to the Lower Peninsula, I do go the other way. It's a mile or a couple, a couple, two or three miles further, but it's considerably faster, especially when you get bad traffic backup. And the other way literally never has the traffic backup. So, you know, I, people, drivers are creatures of habit. I've always gone that way, and I wanna keep going that way, and will probably keep doing that until I sit in traffic for a half an hour, and then maybe I'll figure out another way to go. Sometimes it has to get bad before people say, you know, maybe there is a better way. So I, I'm.
I think the travel time sign idea is, that's definitely worth looking into.
It's a good idea.
If you could save.
I would actually think that's something that you could do now at a relatively modest cost and get some real data about what people are likely to do.
I agree. I'm in favor of moving forward and taking my colleagues' considerations to heart. Thank you.
I'm gonna be a good committee member on y'all's committee. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
I'm not sure they would agree with that.
Sorry about that, John. All right. Next, we'll move into our consent calendar. Our consent calendar consists of fiscal year 2023 supplementary appropriations of 6,800, 683,000, excuse me, contract award for 677,754 to James City County Recreation Center renovation projects, memorandum of agreement for participating in the Hampton Roads Regional Stormwater Management Program and minutes adoption. Are there any items, any member wishes to pull, or may I have a?
Motion.
Motion. Thank you. Roll call, sir.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Hipple?
Aye.
All right. Next, we'll move into board discussions. Fiscal year 2024 budget. Welcome.
Chairman, members of the board, good afternoon. We'll start off this afternoon with a discussion of FY23's finances through March 2023. And first, we'll look at general fund revenue. Presented here is the county's FY23 revised budget and actual revenues through March 2023. FY22 actual revenues through March are also presented for comparative purposes. The FY23 adopted budget was 217 million, and revisions to the general fund budget reflect uses of fund balance approved during the course of the year. The first line on this table, general property taxes, shows our largest revenue source, representing two-thirds of our total revenue. This category includes real estate and personal property taxes. The regular bills for these taxes are due twice per year, and there are supplemental billings every other month to pick up property improvements, new purchases, and people moving into the county. As a result, these March actuals reflect the December 2022 regular billing and supplemental billings through February 2023. Our second regular property tax billing is due June 5th, so we'll see a significant bump in this revenue category during the fourth quarter. Most of the year-over-year increase in general property taxes relates to real estate because FY23 reflects the most recent reassessment. We do reassessments in real estate every other year. The remainder of the increase relates to personal property taxes, which are assessed every year on a calendar year basis. The other revenue types shown do not have the same billing or collection frequency as general property taxes. Other local taxes, for example, include certain revenues we collect every month, and that have trends we can monitor, such as local sales taxes, meals, and lodging. Other local taxes, though, also includes revenues that depend on particular transactions, which may not be as predictable, such as deeds of conveyance and recordation taxes. We'll go into other local taxes in a little bit more detail on the next slide, so you can see these particular differences. Looking at the other actuals through March, increases in charges for services primarily relate to increases in parks and rec revenue as we move into the spring months, and the majority of the 1.5 million in miscellaneous and transfers was due to a property sale earlier this year. Lastly, on the fund balance line, you can see that the county has spent 4.2, excuse me, 14.2 million of fund balance during FY23 for various purposes. This includes 6.1 million for FY23 CIP projects, 4.8 million for school year-end spending, and 1.7 million for prior year purchase orders. Now, the use of fund balance in FY22 was very, used for similar purposes, but last year, fund balance was also used to acquire properties at Courthouse Green for $7 million. So that's the main difference between use of fund balance between the two years. Now, because fund balance is not a recurring source of revenue, we've also provided a year-over-year comparison down at the bottom of the slide in red that excludes the use of fund balance. That way, you can see the overall growth in recurring revenues is 9.6 million or approximately 8%. Driving into other local taxes, I've mentioned the timing of these tax collections isn't as straightforward as general property taxes. To help compare the county's collection through March 2023 to FY23 budgeted amounts, this slide takes the percentage of the budget we would have expected to collect at this point of the year based on the particular tax type, and that's shown in green on these columns, and that compares it to actual collections through March shown in blue. Again, we don't receive these revenues in equal amounts each month, so this slide provides an approximation of the budget. For certain types of these revenues, we see increases or decreases depending on the time of the year or other circumstances. For a local and historical triangle 1% sales tax, the county receives these revenues two months in arrears. Also, we usually see increases in these revenue types in summer months and during the November, December holiday time period. Factoring in those fluctuations, the county typically collects roughly 55% to 60% of these revenues by the March time period, and that's what you'll see in the green columns in the first two sections. Actual revenues, though, are shown in blue. So we usually see 55% to 60% in those revenue types right now. Actuals are trending closer to 67% for, again, the sales taxes. For business and professional licenses, the county has one date, one due date each fiscal year, and that is March 1st. So as of the end of March, we would expect to see 100% of our business and professional license revenues to be collected. So that's what that green bar is showing there for business and professional license, 100% of the FY23 budget. And county's actual collections, though, are shown in blue, and, and you can see the budget was at about 6.7 million for FY23, and as of the end of March, we are at 7.7 million of actual collections. And then the next two sets of columns are lodging and meals tax, and we collect those one month in arrears. Similar to sales taxes, we see increases in this revenue type during our summer months and over the holidays. Factoring in these fluctuations, the county typically collects about 60% of total revenue for these tax types, and right now, actuals are trending at over 75%. The last category, the smallest one, the other, includes the deeds of conveyance and recordation taxes, again, which I mentioned earlier, depend on particular land transactions that are recorded in a given month. So because the dollar value and amount of these particular types of transactions can vary, identifying trends in this area can be a little bit more difficult. We will continue to monitor these revenues as well as all our other revenues types as we move into the final quarter of the year.
I did just wanna make a comment, if I could, that we did hear from Visit Williamsburg yesterday that the year-to-date occupancy has grown 7.4% over 2019 figures, and the average daily rate's like 15.1 increase. So even though we are not in the summer months yet, I think we, we're gonna see a good start to the year, hopefully making for an even stronger summer, so.
Yes, that's, that's a great point, and it's been something interesting to review. We, we do, looking back, we do try to remove any outliers, in particular FY20, quarter four, we had to, we had to adjust so that we weren't reflecting those. But even looking at prior years and comparing it to current year activity, we are showing some real improvement there. Turning to the expenditure side, and noting if all expenses came in evenly, we would expect to see about 75% of the budget utilized so far. Overall, we're at 72% right now, with the last category of contributions and transfers showing 84%. We'll talk about specific departments and that contribution category on the next slide. This line graph represents department spending in the blue line for three quarters of the fiscal year compared to that 75% benchmark shown in green. Our departments are tracking below the 75% point at this, at this time of the fiscal year, and again, only contributions and transfers is above 75. This category includes, though, support to our outside agencies, most, most of which receive their funding at the start of the fiscal year, as well as our transfers to other funds, which again, tend to take place in July. As a result, this area tends to see most of its expenditures incurred earlier in the fiscal year. Departments tend to be trending below 75%, primarily due to certain expenditures not trending as high as originally budgeted, turnover during the year, and certain expenditures that are not anticipated until that final quarter of the fiscal year that we're still waiting on. I'll also note that the county's contribution to the schools for operations is at exactly 75% for, as of March, but the percentage shown on this slide also factors in our transfers for debt service, and we pay for the schools' debt for, for CIP projects, and that's in the December and the June timeframe. So you will see that number bump up once we make those June debt service payments. That wraps up what I have on the financial update for the third quarter of FY23, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
Wow, good job.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Good afternoon, chairman, members of the board. Now that you've heard how we're doing so far this fiscal year, I wanted to take a moment and update you briefly on a few items in the 24 budget. That budget, of course, would begin July 1st, 2023. The fiscal year 2024 is the second year, again, of the county's two-year budget, and it serves as the county's means of allocating funding to our strategic plan goals. The total budget for all the funds is the 330.2 million, which again is a 42.7% increase, or about $99 million. It's important to note, and you'll hear more about this in the presentation, that most of that increase is related to capital. As you can see, almost 80 million of that 99 million is related to capital and primarily related to three projects. The operating component, which would be the ongoing expenses, part of that number, is only up about 14 million. Percentage-wise, that's about 6%, which is directly in line with what we're seeing with inflation and the current CPI. There is no change in the tax rates, personal property or real estate, that's being proposed in next year's budget. There are modest increases in the recreation center fees and the childcare programs directly tied to the cost of running and operating those programs. And there's also an alignment of the medic transport recovery fee with the reimbursement rates that we receive from the federal government through the Medicareed program. The budget doesn't include any new positions. It does provide for a general wage increase and also changes to certain existing positions. And again, about 39- And again, about $39 million in requests were not funded in the 2024 budget, primarily due to funding restraints. So we've had a lot of questions about the increase in the 2024 budget, which, of course, is a valid question, so I wanted to make sure I addressed it and mentioned some more specifics about what is driving that. This chart here depicts the all-inclusive budgets for the last five years, as well as the 2024 proposed budget, and you can see the color coding there represents each fund of the county. We have our general fund, we have our capital fund, and then we have six other smaller funds, primarily driven by grants. Most budget discussions at other localities and just in the news primarily focus on your operating budget, which for us is our general fund, but the county presents both. We present our total budget of all of our funds, and then we also focus a lot of our discussion on the general fund, because that's what's funded by the tax rate. Capital, because it's included in that number, can fluctuate dramatically from one year to another. So what we're trying to show you here in this green arrow is the blue portion of each of those stacked graphs. If you look at that across the screen, you'll see what's happening in 2024 as it relates to CIP, that dark blue color. The dark red is your operating budget, and you can see that's pretty consistent for the last several years. Again, that's only increasing about 6%, which is in line with CPI. During the pandemic, our capital plan was reduced, primarily to maintenance efforts, and even then, only really critical maintenance efforts. So you see that in the blue. If you look from '20, '21, '22, and '23, it's barely moving, very small amount of the total budget. And then it increases in 2024. That's because we're recovering. We're recovering from the pandemic, and as we've recovered, we've been putting funds set aside in fund balance to reinstate some of the initiatives that were started but put on hold. And again, that's primarily capital-driven by three projects. For example, in 2024, there's a $26 million preschool project that's in the plan. That has something that's been discussed for years, but again, was put on hold. We have that in the plan in 2024, so it's 100% increase when you're comparing one year to another. However, when you look at 2025, we don't have that. So next year, when I stand before you, you'll have a significant decrease. I think of it like when you buy a car or you buy a house. You're not doing that every year. You're doing that maybe every five, 10, in the case of a home, maybe 20, 30 years. It's going to cause a dip or an increase or decrease in your overall budget. To demonstrate the volatility of our capital fund, here we're presenting more of a 10-year review, so we have several years of actuals, five years in the past, also all of the years and the five-year plan, so you can see what happens in the future. Again, you'll see here, our capital fund was virtually non-existent during the years of the pandemic, 2019 through 2023, because, again, our focus was on just maintaining our current facilities. That approach is not sustainable. Continuing to delay it further will only increase the cost going forward, and of course, our population's continuing to grow, our demand for services continues to grow, and our infrastructure needs to keep pace. A few of the major projects that are programmed in 2024, we have a general services building, which will allow staff to better serve our citizens, as well as our internal users, preschool space, which I mentioned already, and also the design costs for our new county government center. You can see here, again, in '25 and 2026, the CIP goes back down, and then in 2027, there's funding for the construction of the county government center and a new library. Those projects are funded by bond proceeds, which means we don't incur all of those costs in 2027. It will be repaid over the next 20 to 30 years, and the timing of those projects is strategic, because we will have some existing debt that's already part of our budget that's going to be paid off, which allows us the ability to accommodate new debt without increasing any of the revenue sources. In terms of how we pay for the county and the schools' capital projects, we do not rely solely on taxpayer dollars. We use a combination and diversify our funding streams. So we use a combination of sales tax and lodging tax, which, of course, tourism contributes towards, and you've heard that we're tracking very well in those areas. We also, when we implemented the cigarette tax, 100% of that tax was earmarked for CIP. We have fund balance that's built up during the last several years that was put aside to help pay for some of these projects, and we have a borrowing, which will also partially repay some of these projects. That borrowing perhaps can be repaid with future revenues that we would have when this existing complex is sold. The plan would be that the Mounts Bay complex would be sold, eventually developed, and that would generate more personal property, real estate taxes, and other local sales taxes, which, again, could be used to help pay down the debt for the new facility. I also wanted to talk a little bit about the county's funding to the school division. So in 2024, about 106 million has been set aside to include funding for the school operations, the debt service on their capital projects, and also the compensation for the school board. Up to an additional $2 million in local funding has also been set aside to be determined once the General Assembly adopts its budget, and we know the amount of state funding that's actually going to be provided to the school division. And then, in addition, the county is contributing another $4.9 million in pay-as-you-go funding for school capital projects next year. One of the things we like to show as well is what does the state require us to contribute? Based on the state's own formula, they require that we contribute almost $53 million, 52.8. We contribute 105.6, which is literally twice the amount of the requirement, and that's all-inclusive, operations, debt service, and capital.
Sharon, can you say that one more time, just to... I like that little part.
Yes, with the standards of quality requirement, and this is the same formula that the state uses when it determines how much it provides to the school division, we're required to provide $52.8 million. That's a dollar amount the state determines on an annual basis, and in 2024, we're contributing 105.6, which is literally twice the requirement.
Thank you.
We also receive a few questions from time to time about our funding to the outside agencies, so I wanted to speak to that a little bit. As you know, we provide funding to a number of nonprofits in the area that provide vital services to the residents that we, as the county, do not. This is a list of the county's contributions over the past five years. These agencies are funded based on agreements, some are per capita, and some are based on other usage measures. It's all tied to the direct benefit that our residents are receiving from these agencies. We've shown here the major entities that we fund, but we also provide further details. For example, if you wanted to see specifically under health services entities who that includes, that is in the county's budget in Section C, which is available on our website. But what we're demonstrating here is the increase in the demand for services coming out of the pandemic. You can see in 2020, we are at 11.9 million, and in 2024, post-pandemic, we're at almost 14 million. That is driven by the demand for services and also in the increase to provide those services. Again, they're faced with the same inflationary climate that we're operating in as well. And with that, that concludes my remarks. I did want to mention that the budget is scheduled for adoption at your regular meeting at 5:00 PM on May the 9th. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
Where are we with the General Assembly, Sharon? Where are we?
Yes, yes, I do need that crystal ball. It all depends on who you ask and what article you read on any given day. There is still a lot of discussion going on. I don't anticipate that we will have a firm number before we adopt the budget.
So in that case, what's our plan with the schools?
I'm going to defer to the county administrator and how he's worked that into our budget.
Yeah, Ms. Larson, I've had a number of conversations with the superintendent. What she would tell us is that she cannot provide contracts to her teachers until you adopt our budget and she knows that she has funding. At a $4 million contribution, she can provide a 5% raise, is what she had shared. At a $6 million contribution, she could provide a 7% raise. The 7% raise is what she would like to be able to provide, and she would like to be able to issue that with the contracts as soon as you adopt your budget. That way, she feels she has an advantage of retaining teachers. Where we have struggled is once you give that number and it's there, I don't think you ever get it back. And once you, if you were to try to give less next year, even if the state gives more, you end up coming across as not funding the schools in an inappropriate manner. At least, that's my concern. So what I've shared with her, we want her to be able to retain teachers and hire new ones and be competitive in her salaries. We have, again, put in the 4 million, which is, we'd set aside in the plan, 1.2 million, so we've upped that to 4 in terms of their operating budget with this additional 2, depending on what the state does. As Sharon mentioned, we may not have that answer for sure, but I don't believe we'll have it by May 9th. We may not have it till the end of June, and so we do have some discussion of maybe what's the best way there. Do you adopt it with 4 million with a commitment to do more if the state doesn't? So some contingency plan that would allow them, or do we just say 4 is it? Or do we adopt it with 6 with the idea that you might modify your budget before the end of June if the state adopts their budget for the end of June? So I don't have the final answer, but my intent was to support the schools if the state does not, with the idea that we don't have it currently in their number, that expectation from the county in future years. Sharon and I haven't talked about the year-end surplus. Maybe there's a way to incorporate that, that some contingent of use of that to provide a one-time funding, so she could move forward with that and see what the state does, because maybe it's next year. Maybe the state doesn't get back and adopt a budget. As I understand, one version, the state can do nothing, and the budget stands, and the school division doesn't get more money. And then if next year, they were to make some changes that support more of the positions that we have been paying 100% of locally, that might be an opportunity where we could do some one-time money for next year that wouldn't be there the year after that. So we're still talking about options of how to be supportive without having a final answer, because we don't know what the state is going to do yet.
So can I follow up on that and just ask about what our range of options would be? So one would be just to adopt a budget that does not take into account the money that you've set aside, recognizing that there are other county needs that are being deferred that could utilize that 2-point, whatever it is.
It's an additional 2 million for the school division and then some other numbers in that contingency piece, too.
Right. Another option would be to say that, depending on what the state does, we might want to do more than the 7%. I think the board indicated that it was supportive of a larger teacher salary increase than the 7% the state's talking about, so that's still another possibility on the table, right? And that would entail making a determination, either when we adopt the budget that we want to do more than what we had said, or that, you know, we're hoping that the state will provide more that would allow for us to get closer to the objectives that the school board said they favored and that we had indicated that we support. And so there are a couple of different ways that we could think about that money, right?
I think the short answer is yes. Now, I'll tell you what I thought I heard from the board is absolutely the board supports raises for teachers. That seemed to be unanimous across. It's how do you get there? And some of that is more money. That's the easier route. The other route is cut something else or not do something else at the moment, and I think that's some of the conversation that I remember from the joint meeting with our superintendent of, are there ways you can move some money around to meet that increased pay? Again, as I think you've stated as a board a number of times, you provide the money, but you don't really get to tell the school division what to do with it. They, as the school board and the superintendent, have to decide how to then spend that money and allocate it. And so I have relayed what Dr. Hannah and I spoke about in terms of contracts and the need to retain teachers and 5% versus 7%, and that $2 million delta in there, if the state hadn't made a decision, seems to be very significant in her ability to issue those contracts, so I need to make sure I understand that a little better before your May 9th meeting, and maybe there's a way to have a commitment, again, either fund it with year-end money, and we'll figure it out next year, once we know what the state has done, so that we're not so baked into that additional $6 million forever.
Well, right, because we could allocate additional money. It doesn't necessarily mean, though, that it has... they don't have to put it in that... to the raise. I mean, they could spend it how they see fit, so... but I hear them saying that they, what they plan to do is to do that in compensation.
And I'm not... you know, it's hard to second-guess their budget, because we're not in the details of that, and that is the school board and the superintendent's responsibility to bring a budget forward that they feel meets the needs of the school division. But I would tell you, in our budget, we have about 2 million in positions I didn't recommend for funding this year that I believe we need, but we, as department heads and others, had made the decision that supporting our current staff, retaining, retention, those kinds of things, were our priority this year to recommend to you versus trying to fund everything that was requested. And that is a conversation we've had. I believe the departments need those approximately 20 positions, but I also think we need to retain and be able to fill the positions we have first. So I think they have some ability to make those adjustments. I just don't know to what degree.
Here's my two cents, and I don't know why the school isn't run like the county. And of course, we give money, and we can't say how they spend it. I sat on this board so frustrated about school buses, I didn't know what to do. Well, we gave you seven last year, and what happened? And so every year was the same thing. And I even approached Adam and I and said, "You can't tell them what to spend it on. It's against the law." And so I was like, "Okay." Well, I was thinking, "Well, if we're funding them, and you say, 'I'm going to do these things,' and then you re-appropriate it to somewhere else," it gets a little frustrating. Now, teachers' raises, yeah, I think the teachers should have a raise. Are we responsible, giving them the entire thing of raises? No, because we've got all ours to give. And when we find out that, and we've done it several times since I've been on the board, the fire department was in an issue and needed raises for certain ones, we did that. We took care... We didn't say we're giving everybody in the county a raise because we couldn't afford it. So we'd said, "Okay, we have an issue here. Let's take care of that. Police department needed something. Let's take care of that." Each time, we've taken care of. We didn't say, "Okay, we're giving it across the board." And it seems like, on the school side of it, if you give a raise, everybody gets a raise. Well, the teachers are the issue, and we're losing teachers, and it's because they're not being paid enough, then I would think that the school board and the superintendent would come together and say, "We need to give our teachers a raise, and we need to give those teachers a raise." Not everybody need to concentrate on those teachers, and that's what's not getting done on that side of the fence. And it's very frustrating to me, because we've had multiple meetings, and it seems like when we're done the meeting, that's it. We're going to do whatever the heck we want to, and it doesn't matter what the board says or what they think or their input at all. We cannot tell the school board anything. We can give them funding, what, 105% of what we normally would have to give? I mean, my gracious, if you can't see that that is way over and above what we're required to do, and the reason we do it is because we care about our teachers, we care about our school system, and we care about our students, and that's why we put the money we put in. And every year, it comes back to, "The board of supervisors are not doing anything. They're not giving you any money. They're not doing this, and we're the bad guys." Well, we're not the bad guys, and I'm tired of it. I've fed up about here with all of it. Give the teachers a raise. Find out if there's projects you may have to put on hold for two or three years in order to make sure those teachers are paid properly for the job they're doing, and we won't lose them, and your issue will be taken care of. But going like that and saying, "Well, it's... these five members here are the reason..." Give me a break. You educated, you run the school system, you know what to do, you know how to do it, you know what needs to be done. Take care of the situation. It's on your side of the fence. Stop bringing it over here. We're funding you perfectly well, and you're not doing what you need to do. And that's my two cents on the, "Give our teachers a raise." My gracious, help them out. Anyone else have anything to add?
Well, so I think, to your point, we've had numerous meetings, and I think at our last joint meeting, we kind of asked, "Are you doing anything on your side?" I mean, we are holding back positions. To your point, we've given raises to departments that were in dire need, so we take care of them by department to make sure that we're... do what we can as we're going along with what we have to make it work. And I don't... do we know? Have they made any adjustments, Mr. Stevens, to their budget and how they're going to take care of that?
Sadly, I do not know. I haven't heard those details since our joint meeting.
All right. Well, I suspect we probably... I don't know how we get those answers. It's my understanding that the state legislature can make changes to its budget at any time, and then if the governor... And then if the governor, the way it's explained to me, if the governor signs off on those changes, it becomes effective immediately. So they can, they can make their changes as they go along and boom, it's taken care of. My concern with that, with, I agree, give the teachers raises. Figure it out. Figure it out and get it done. My concern with that two percent, we've got people here that need raises. We have departments that need extra people. And we've put that on the back burner to be efficient. My concern is if we, if we're not careful with that two percent contingency, hang on to it till we see, like we had discussed and agreed, that's what we're going to do. Wait and see what they're going to do. And then we can adjust accordingly. If they don't come through, then, then we amend our budget. I'm assuming that's what we can do. And the state does the same thing. I would hate to see us yield that. And then all of a sudden the state comes through, then they've got that much extra, then we've got to meet all that extra, you know, in the years to come. And then we're left with not having our needs met, met. So I, I agree, the teachers need raises. I think we've all agreed to that. And to your point, how they get there, I think that they need to take a step to figure out what they're going to do to make adjustments to get to that point while we're waiting to see what the general assembly is going to do. So at 105% that we give to schools, 105%, did you say that?
105 million.
105 million, I'm sorry. 105.6 million that we give to schools, which is double what we're required to give. I think, I would hope and pray that they'd be able to take a breath, figure out how to address their particular problem with teachers, which I have all the confidence in the world, they could do that. And then we can focus on what we need to do here and then make adjustments if it doesn't pan out in Richmond. Cause we never know what Richmond's going to do.
So I think, I mean, we're seeing unprecedented education challenges trying to come back from COVID. I mean, from, for a number of reasons. We could all, I hope somebody for God's sake, Monday morning quarterbacked and, you know, said was the right thing. And I'm not, this is not directed at WJCC because it, it was nationwide, you know? Did we do the right thing shutting down schools? What, you know, and, and so the learning loss and everything. So there's great empathy for what, they've got so many things percolating over there that of not of their own making and, and trying to come back from that and learning loss and discipline. And, and so, but I think the, the one question that I do have is we're saying, are, are we committed that we're, we've got that $2 million in contingency? So that Dr. Heron knows she's going to get it? But we're going to wait and see what the general assembly does, right? So, so moving, I mean, in your conversations with your partner over there, I mean, isn't there a way to move forward with the, the contracts, knowing that we are committed to, that we're going to come through with that money if the general assembly does not?
Ms. Larson, you know, the proposed budget that Sharon and I put together, that is in there. And that is, that has been our commitment to recommend to you that kind of approach. Ultimately, it's your decision. So if you as a board say, I think whether it's adopted or not, that we're committed to doing that if the state doesn't come through, whether it's one time for that $2 million or not, for me, I think that could provide that cover. And we'll need to help make sure we understand if there's a legal part beyond that. It maybe you have to allocate some of the year end money and take it back then. I mean, there's, there's bound to be a way to get us there that doesn't fully commit you to that $6 million forever. And that was my approach is trying to support the raises if there's not another way to get there. But you as a board have to be willing to commit to that too, before they could step out. I don't know that you have to appropriate it, but I think you'd have to be willing to. And so that's what we'd be looking for May ninth, whether it's appropriated or not, a willingness to do it if it doesn't come from somewhere else.
And this is, this is to the, you know, our second year budget. So this is adjusting that from what we wouldn't be doing. It would be, I think, 1.2 that they would have this year. Now we're looking at four, possibly six above what we're already doing. So you gotta remember, we already set this budget two years ago and it was 1.2. Now it's four, now it may be six, you know, plus doubling what we're supposed to be giving anyhow. So those layered up, that's a lot of money. It's a lot of money. The two, if, if the state doesn't come through, and I'm not saying if the state doesn't come through this year, it may be on hold and they come through next year. Well, they're coming through. So I don't want it to be stuck at this year. This year they're going to hold the line on X. We don't know what they're going to do. And then next year they're going to bring it back to that point. Well, then we're $2 million that we can put into what our needs are right now. And so that's, that's a worry of mine. I want to see not only what the budget is, where it is, and if it's stuck this year and it bumps up next year, then they're getting the bump up, but they may have to wait. But they're already getting $4 million more than they were planning on getting to begin with this year. So it's not like they're not getting anything.
So I, I had a couple of just points of clarification I, I wanted to get. The first is, I think at the retreat, we did actually see some indication of what, of how the school administration had moved to make some shifts. Part of it was savings from their vacancies. And, you know, some other actions that they took to reduce somewhat their expenditures outside of salary. So they could move more money there. Not, not a huge impact granted, but, but there was something that they had done. I am curious about, about a couple of things. One is, so Ms. McCarthy, what, what's our current composite index number? Is it like 53, 54?
Yeah, it's in that range. It's in the budget document.
So, so what would be the impact? Let's say that the, the state actually did take that cap off of support positions. How does that affect us in terms of our contribution versus the state's contribution?
Based on standards of quality, they fund certain positions at their salary scale. We provide a subsidy for those positions. And then we also provide 100% funding for a number of other positions in addition to that. Which is partially how we get to that additional funds.
So I, as I understand it, you know, if it's a position that's not SOQ, it is SOQ related, but not covered currently, if it's one of those support positions, that we're now paying a hundred percent of the cost.
That's correct.
And now they would come in and they would pay a slightly less than half the cost.
Yes, that's my understanding.
Right.
Mr. McGlynn, our, our number is 0.5331 is what I see from the superintendent.
Okay, so 46.69 or something like that, yeah. Yeah. In any case, you know, it, it should result in a fairly significant shift of responsibility from this, from the county to the state.
And that's also reset every two years. And so it'll be reset again in 2025.
And it's been going down, hasn't it?
It has been going slightly down.
Right, okay. And I, I just wonder what, what, how, how we ought to think about that in terms of what our contribution is to, to the schools and what money ought to be available to them in terms of, of providing assistance to the, the goal of teacher salaries. And, and I don't mean for you to answer that today, but you know, just to, to, just to think about it a little bit. And if there's any significant impact. Cause I think that, I frankly, I think that that really should be our, our number one priority with the state legislature is asking them to take that cap off. Because it recognizes what we've been doing and puts the responsibility back on the state, which they abdicated during the great recession for understandable reasons, I suppose. But didn't mean, we didn't have to pay for it.
Somebody had to.
Right, right. And then the one other thing I, I was just curious about, you know, we are justifiably pleased with the very low increase in our insurance premiums. And is there no opportunity for the schools to explore some kind of possibility of doing a similar kind of system?
I know there's been discussions about that in the past. It does come up every time we renew, if we go back out for our proposal to rebid our services. The last two times we did approach the school division and they wanted to stay with local choice program. That program, of course, is a fully insured program, which has its advantages and disadvantages. We are self insured. We believe that provides us more flexibility and local control over things. There have been years in local choice program where they had very modest increase. Next year's not one of them.
Right, yeah. I just wondered if, if it, if it isn't worth, you know, maybe not for this year's budget, probably, obviously, because things are already pretty much set for, for this coming year. But to, to have a conversation, to have maybe a working group really take a deep dive into that, if the schools are willing to do that. Cause there may be some real opportunities for, for saving there. So those, those are just, and, and just one final point of clarification. I do think that we have made a decision to provide increases for our hardworking and well deserving staff across the board now, and that that is programmed into this coming year's budget as well.
Yes, sir. Again, you've done $1,500 in April that has been well received and another 5% is recommended July 1st.
Thank you.
The other thing too, just going back to health insurance, and I, again, we have no control and can't. But I think you also talked about the several wellness programs that we had put into place and we were seeing payoff from that. I mean, I, I've got to give kudos to our HR department, Stephanie especially, who's, works very hard to get out programs. A lot on stress reduction, but that does help with overall health. You know, I'm, I'm sure that she would be willing to discuss that with her counterpart and see if there was any way that they could help in that way as well.
Yes, those efforts have certainly paid off. And we were worried coming out of the pandemic because so many surgeries and those types of things were postponed. We were worried about our high cost claims coming out. But we've made some modifications to our stop loss coverage and they continued with those initiatives and really being out there, going to the people. And it really has paid off, so kudos to HR.
Absolutely. So, yeah, I think it, it, you know, the frustrating part is for me that I think we all see, I mean, you absolutely see the value of education, my goodness. And, and this is a large chunk of our budget. And it's a huge part of our economic development as a county as well. I mean, we, we want to have good quality schools. And it's very difficult. We need, you know, going back to what Supervisor McGlynn said, the great recession, while the, the, the state is certainly not having a great recession right now. They're, they're seeing a lot of additional funds. So if they could step up and help would be greatly appreciated. But I think for me, some of the frustration is when I watch the school board meeting and it's, I'm in support of this raise. Well, we don't decide that percentage. And so, you know, then it, it gets volleyed back as though, you know, if we're, if we're not doing this, we're not in support of that. That isn't the case. It's, I mean, obviously this, this board in this county is supportive of education based on the amount of money that, that we do contribute to the school system or to we, that we give to the school system. So it, it, to say in a meeting, well, I'm in support of this without having a more thorough budget discussion, I think is sometimes where things can get frustrating. So, but I guess we'll just wait and see what happens in Richmond, Tik Tok and all that.
Mr. Stevens, if I can, just to sort of follow up here. We've got $4 million set aside, which is 5% raise. That's in the budget. That stays in the budget going forward. In other words, that this is, this is a recurring or, or does that, I mean, do we take our 5% pay raise away from them next year? I mean, I get, you know, it's like when we give our employees a pay raise, we're incurring a commitment out into the future. So that $4 million that we are, have put into the budget for a 5% pay raise, which is basically what's there right now, is not just for this year, it's for practical planning purposes. We're going to be looking at this year after year.
Mr. Stevens, I think in terms of taking a raise back, none of us as an employer would go into it thinking we're going to have to take it back. So you're right. Once that expense is there, it's there. Now, if the state revenues went up significantly last, next year, then maybe we have, maybe we give less next year.
Okay, that, and, and that's, that's what I wanted to get back to here. Because when you're talking about that other $2 million, we don't know what the state's going to do. I don't have any confidence the state's going to do anything. So if we are looking at potentially telling the schools that if the state doesn't step up and do anything, that we would get, put that extra $2 million out there to give them a 7%. That we do have the flexibility with that $2 million going forward to try to offset with state revenue at, at a later time, is that correct?
Yes, sir. I think you could do it with the $4 million or $6 million. If you chose to give them that, if state revenues increased significantly in FY '25, it should need less local funding to be able to maintain what they have.
Okay.
If more of the positions you've been paying for or paid for in part by the state, that should reduce the burden on us.
Right, because I, I wanted, I wanted to make sure, you know, that we, you know, this is not something that is just a one time.
Right.
This is something that you, you've got to look at it going, going forward. And so it's, it's, it's a major commitment. It's a major commitment that we're having to make because our counterparts, the state are unwilling to do it. It's the best, that's the most polite way I can put it.
And just to put a finer point on that, Mr. Eisenhour, we, we need to remember that if the state says, yes, we're going to increase the, the raise from 5% to 7%, they're talking about their share of 7%.
That's right, their share.
Which, which is a little less than half.
Agreed. The, the other question, stepping aside from, from the schools that I, that I had, and this may be come back to. What's our, I know we've been drawing down our debt over the years. What's our, what's our current level of debt? Is it some?
It was, it's south of 100 million.
Okay, that's what I thought. It was, it was under 100 million. Cause at one point, a few years ago, it was like 250 million, 240?
Yes.
So we're, we're, we're down quite low. What I'm concerned about in the CIP is with the borrowing that we're going to be doing this year and an even bigger slug in 2027. What our, where do you anticipate that we would be under, on that total, on total debt in 2028? Out at the five years? What, in other words, what would this, what would the retirements of debt over that five year period that we currently have, the 100 million coming down further, but the addition of the new debt on? Where, where would we be in, in, in our borrowing roughly at, at that point?
And that part is discussed in the debt service section of the document. You know, we have three fiscal measures for debt service, two of which we would still continue to be in compliance with. Those are mandated by the credit rating agencies. In addition to that, you as a board has set another policy that the pay down of debt will be at least 60% of the outstanding balance in 10 years. That is a threshold that we would not meet. We would be in the 50 percentile of that. Now, within a year or two, we get back there. But there's a couple of years where there's an overlap. There's a number of ways you could address that. The first one would be, you know, some of the year end surpluses that we talk about, you could use some of those funds to pay down debt. That's a good use of fund balance. You could also use that to borrow less. So you could pay as you go more capital projects, borrow, borrow less. We also talked about some future revenue sources from the sale of this complex. Those revenues could be earmarked to increase what you're using to pay down your debt. And then also there's the other revenue sources that we have that we can look to for any adjustments if we were, if we needed to do that. And last but not least, you could delay projects.
But we do have the option of delaying a project a year or two or something to try to
You do.
Smooth that out.
Absolutely. And also these are based on estimates. So a lot depends on what happens.
Well, and, you know, if you're, and, and looking at the, at the CIP, it's obviously the, there's a certain flexibility with it that as you get further out, things have the ability to, or likelihood of that in fact, of, of moving. And, and, and my, my concern that I have right now, and I sort of like to try to have the board consider addressing it before we actually adopt this, is to try to figure out how we can take some concrete steps to keep. concrete steps to keep us from getting below that 60% out in, I think it's '27, '28. So, because I'm a little uncomfortable with that, that part of it.
I think we've got two on there. We've got the library and the library in the building too. So it's kind of double put in there as far as library standalone or library in the new building. So that puts us up over that threshold. So if we take one component of that, okay, the library is not in the building, so that brings the bill to this, or the library is not standalone, it's in the building. So that's something we'd work through as we move closer to those deadlines. And that, that component right there will pretty much, if I'm right, Sharon, will pull us out of that two, two-year area there where we're bumping above where we, and we're talking about a two-year, but we're talking about also the sale of this and the other sales and the money we can put back in there, the savings and everything else that we can put back in there to bring that number down. This is, this is without knowing what this is and some of the other items. This scenario exists because we don't know, you know, what these other items would put into the final product, which one's the library? I mean, it'll be a library somewhere, but we're not talking about the Williamsburg Library, we're talking about James City.
James City County.
And so it's, do we, do we then go, okay, let's take the library and set it out two more years and not have it in the building? And that brings the cost down to the building a little bit? Or, you know, so the library will be our biggest, in my opinion, thing that we need to keep our budget where.
Mr. Viger, just clarify, I don't think we have them there doubled today. We do have the library and the building in '27.
Yes.
But we don't have them in both. And some of that is we had space in the government center. We talked about the library, but then we've also talked about social services and so we've got to come back and sort of finalize the departments there. If social services is in there, then we don't have the renovation costs for social services. And I think
We removed that.
We have taken that part out. So we've removed the social service cost for renovation of their building, sort of assuming the library would be a different building or we'd build the government center bigger. And there's also some discussion going on the library side that I think the board will be asked to consider sometime after the adoption of the budget that may delay or move this around in terms of when we'd need that library. But Sharon and I can come back with some scenarios that would help give you options about what it would mean to keep that percentage within our policy. And again, that's our policy, correct?
Correct.
And really not an impact on credit ratings or other issues.
Correct.
So, but we can still bring options back so that you don't, you can have those to consider as you adopt the budget. Again, this is a five-year plan. The only year I feel really good about, and the numbers are going to change there, will be your FY '24. So as you get further in time, I think it's a good plan, but it definitely will change.
Betsy's out there as well, congratulations. And she's out there, so the, you know, once again, we're talking about not the Williamsburg.
Yeah.
So nobody in there
I wanted to come back to that too, because that was one, I noticed that that was not in the CIP, but we were talking about that we have sources of funding to help with that if we want to move ahead with that participation with the city and the project in the city. Is that correct? It's not going to require specific dedicated funding in '24?
I don't, I don't expect it would require it in '24. The city would have a year of design costs.
Okay.
So whether we pay a percentage share of that, it would be relatively low number, and I think we could find that within next year. We've not budgeted specifically for it. It's '25 when they would need, if our commitment is 5 million or 8 million or 10 million, they would need it in the '25 timeframe before they could award the contract.
Okay.
But I think, I believe we have at least till '25 before you would have to come up. If you choose to partner with the city and their downtown branch at all, it would be the next fiscal year. Any other questions?
I hope we will.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's, that's what I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, we've got to make a commitment to the library. I mean, we are past due, and so I'm going to get on the railroad track like that cartoon you do and not move.
Any, any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you so much.
All right. Next, we'll move into board considerations. All right, and we're looking at joint exercise of power agreement. Brad, you're up, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Before you today is an ordinance which will authorize the county administrator to enter into an agreement with York County to consolidate our emergency communication center with the York-Williamsburg-Pecosin Emergency Communication Center. As we have mentioned previously, staffing is the driving force behind this consolidation. Our number of full-time trained dispatchers is the lowest it has been in over 10 years, and there is very real concern of our own ability to staff a standalone center. As you all are aware, we've been operating out of the York Center since February the 22nd. Due to the electrical issues at our center and some previous concerns about consolidation have been alleviated. We're committed to keeping our employees whole and offering other employment opportunities within the county if they desire to continue to work in James City County. York County has committed to bring on all of our current full-time employees and replace them in comparable roles. We do anticipate maintaining our existing space as a backup for the regional center. I know there's been a lot of discussion and comments made by those involved in the consolidation, and I understand the concerns that are being raised and how our current employees feel about a potential consolidation. Unfortunately, due to staffing, we're in a position that this seems to be the only feasible alternative. Efficiencies of scale certainly exist in a larger consolidated center, including improved staffing, technology upgrades and shared costs. I've spoken with the chiefs and sheriffs that they currently serve, and they're both extremely satisfied with the service they're given by their center and have no concerns. I do want to recognize there are many emergency communications personnel in the audience today, and I want to thank them all for their dedicated and unwavering support for the citizens and first responders in James City County. Consolidation is in no way meant to signify any deficiency on their part or the very positive history of our own center. We've all benefited greatly from their sacrifice and dedication to a job that is often thankless and overlooked. These individuals and the legacy of those who have worked at our center for many years is what makes this such a difficult decision. From a business perspective, it makes sense. From public safety perspective, the risk of not being able to properly staff our own center is just too great, and one that could seriously jeopardize public safety here in James City County. We have explored the possibility of merging the centers and have determined that such a merger would be in the best interest of the county. It's for this reason we recommend adoption of the ordinance before you. You've each toured the York Center over the past week, and I believe you have had all of your questions answered. If there's anything else I can answer today, I'll be happy to do that. I also have some other folks, Chief Ash, Chief Dolman, IRM Director Patrick Page is here as well, so I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions?
Hi. Go ahead, Jim.
No.
No, go ahead.
I don't, I don't have any right now.
I just, I just want to say thank you because there have been numerous questions that have come in with a plethora of quests, things regarding response, the radio, the down to the knowing what the address is, all of that. I mean, it's just been a lot of things that have come in, and I really do appreciate you taking the time to answer all of that. And so I just wanted to thank you for that. I also, I don't know if now's an appropriate time to say anything else, or are we, is this the time? Are we going to go to the vote?
Say whatever you want.
Um, I do know that this is very tough because this is a human issue, and so having a change of your position and where it is located is not easy, and I, great empathy for that, but I hear you with what you're saying about the business. I do just want to take a moment, though, and address some of the character assassination, which may be a little strong, but that has come in about people that have worked for this county for a very long time, and one of those is Kitty Hall. And I want to speak to that because I used to work with Kitty a lot when I was on the school board. I don't work with her as much now, but when I was on the school board, I sat on a lot of RFP committees. And Kitty has always been professional and above board, and I have no indication whatsoever that, that she's ever been anything other than that. And I just want to thank her. I know this has been a very tough time for her, and I want to thank her for her professionalism. And I want to thank you and Chief Ash and Mr. Stevens and Chief Dolman and for all the work that you've done to go into this. And I don't think anyone had any motive other than what I heard from Mr. Stevens from the get-go was a great concern over coverage of the 911 center. That is what brought us here today. It was not anything else. I have no reason to think that it was anything else, and, but I get it. It impacts people. You know, my, my sister-in-law, a week ago, a young widow, lost her job with Allstate for the third time. It went over to India. You know, she just was, that was her third time with them in a position that they up and took her job away. And I know what that, what that does to somebody, and I know that's scary, and, and so I, I get it. But, and I also want to thank the York County 911 Center and all the time that they took to take all of us around. I was most surprised you were there for an hour. The rest of us took more time. That was shocking.
I tried to keep it tight.
But I do want to thank them too for, for everything that they did. So, thank you.
I just wanted to confirm our, the biggest concern, I think, for most people is that our employees will have a position there. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely.
And so we should also say that this vote today means that Mr. Stevens can enter into negotiations. It is not a finality. Right, Mr. Stevens, you'll be negotiating, but there will be other steps that'll be taken. Okay. Thank you.
I want to thank, thank Brad and Scott for setting up the visits over there. I had been over to the York County 911 Center once before, but I especially appreciated the opportunity to go over and see it this time, especially the opportunity to sit and talk to the four of our dispatchers who were on duty at the time I was there. This is probably one of the more difficult decisions boards ever have to make, because this affects the lives of people very, very directly. And so I have two things that I have to balance. Number one is this board has an obligation to ensure that we provide the adequate facilities and people and everything for public safety. And I think that our professional staff has basically given us the indication that I cannot disregard that that could be very much in jeopardy. So that, that's number one. Number two is how it affects the people that are currently working for us. And in that boat, and it's to start out my post-military career with an airline called Pan Am, and you know what happened to Pan Am. I got out the door just a few days before the door slammed shut. I went to another airline. It's a difficult transition. Everything you were used to was totally different. And it was hard. So I, I want to make sure that when we do this, because I think we're going to have to, that the number one thing on my mind is that we do the utmost, the absolute utmost to protect the interests of the people that have been working for us so faithfully for so many years. I am fairly confident that they will be taken over and moved right into a comparable position. I think we will make sure that they do not suffer financially from it. Those are the things that we can control. What we can't control is the emotion, the emotion that you're going to feel when something like that happens. I do appreciate all of the emails that everybody sent. Brad will tell you that every time I get one, I come back and ask him for some follow-up information, because I, I get information that I'm not necessarily technically up to speed on, that raises questions that I want to get answers to, and there can be very, you know, variances in how people interpret things. I've got to make a decision based upon the best information that I think I can get, and the fact that you've given me that from all sides has, I think, helped the process. So the step we take today basically says that we think there's a need to do it, and then we negotiate the specific details and it comes back to us and we look at the, at the final project. But thank you very much for everyone's help.
Follow-up. I'm sorry. There were some concerns, I know, that were raised by police, but when you talk about our questions being answered, that those were part of our, I just want to make sure that we do mention, because I know that we've all gotten the same emails, that we did address those, and that we have assurances that that is all going to go very smoothly through the transition.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Sorry, John.
No, that's fine. And I think everybody else has expressed it pretty, pretty clearly that if I had my druthers, we would have an in-county provision of this service. It's pretty clear to me that we have to do something, and like everybody else, I appreciated the questions that we got and the answers that, that we were able to get to resolve many of those questions. I think every effort is going to be made to ensure that members of our current staff are not financially disadvantaged, and if there is an opportunity for them to move into another county position, because they want to stay employed by James City County, that they will be given every consideration for those positions. And so as, as challenging as, as it is to make a change like this, I think that I would, I was more reassured by the fact that they had gone through these kinds of mergers in two cases previously, and that ultimately people felt part of a team and were able to be successful. And that's not going to make everybody feel like they want to participate, and I, and I respect that. And I suspect that there are opportunities in other places for people who want to pursue something differently, but I would hope that folks would give it a chance and see if they can thrive in this same kind of environment. So, thank you.
So I'd like to thank everyone for arranging for us to, to tour the York County facility. I was really appreciative of some of the current employees that came in and spoke with us, some of them who had been there 20-plus years, and some of them who even drove from New Kent County to be there. But I appreciate the information that they did provide. They answered a lot of questions. I think we took a lot of questions that had been asked of us, and we wanted clarification, and I feel like we got clarification. And I very much appreciate this. This is very, very difficult. I do appreciate all the emails, the phone calls. We've talked to lots of people, and just to make sure that we could get every single possible piece of information clarified before we did take on a decision such as this. We've evaluated the pros and the cons and the ups and the downs and the what-ups and the what-abouts, and it's, it's a lot of information, and I just want to, I want to thank everybody for the communication, the open line of communication all the way around, no matter from what aspect of life. And I do thank you all for everything that you do for this community. I really do.
All right. I too want to thank everybody and thank you for all your hard work, dedication and years of service in James City County. Brad, when we went through this back eighteen nineteen, you weren't in favor of it.
That's correct.
What's different? Sorry to put you on the spot, but
Oh, that's fine. You know, I think the reason we were doing it back then was was a different reason. And back then, there were a lot of questions that were unanswered, and I think we've gotten answers to those questions. I think just primarily, like it is now, it's staffing. And back then, that wasn't the primary reason, I don't think. And the questions that I had back then, I'm comfortable with the answers now that I've gotten.
All right, I too visited the the center and and um found it to be a, and I've been there before and been to our center. And um with being in the volunteer fire department, it's I could see family there as well as I could see it in James City County. And um maybe it's a different family when we come together, but you know, it's it's this group is unique and they're their own family. And a lot of people don't know it and don't realize that they're out there watching everything for us and and protecting us, but they are. And and um, you know, and to be in that stressful environment, work those hours, the shifts and everything else is got to be extremely hard. And they pull together and I know that family atmosphere is going to go over to York County as well if that's decided and continue in that because they're still, you know, a family. I talked to a lot of people. I talked to dispatchers. I talked to police. I talked to fire. I talked to retired people and and people on the on staff and their concerns and their worries and and brought them to y'all and and said, hey, where, what about this? How are they going to do this? And every question was answered. And um, so that took a lot of worry for me off of, okay, how do they get this? How do they do that? I was even told that James City County staff is stuck in a corner. And when I looked at the facility, there's four corners. So three York County people are stuck in corners too. So it wasn't stuck in a corner and 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 I asked, I said, how come our people are stuck over there? And said, well, that they, that's where they wanted to be together, right there. And we're accommodating what they want as far as fitting into our center. And they want to be with each other right there. And I said, well, that that's good. I'm glad to hear that. The um, there was a petition circulated, uh, one of our retired officers. And if you really want to do what's best for James City County, I don't understand why all the information in that wasn't as truthful as it should have been. And there was a ton of people that signed it. And I looked through all of them. I even found Mr. Egg in there. It signed it. I don't know who Mr. Egg is. And from California, Pennsylvania, to all over the place. And um, I'm more interested in citizens of James City County than somebody in California. Bless their heart, but I'm I'm not really worried about them as much as I am as our citizens. Um, Mr. Stevens, if we were to move in this direction and we were to go to York County and we find out from our staff, and even if they're working for York County, it's still going to be our staff, you know, and um and we find out something's not right or something's not working or some can they come back? Can we? I know there'd be a cost and all that, but I don't want to totally close the door. But would there be an opportunity if we find out, hey, this is not working? It's not fitting like we thought. It's not fitting in the way we thought it was going to be. Is there a possibility of those members coming back to James City County and opening our center back up? I know it's a on-the-spot kind of question for you, but
You know, Mr. Hippel, I I think the answer is yes. There are, we do a lot of joint things with other localities. We have a lot of agreements. There's almost always a way out, but I wouldn't tell you it's easy. If we consolidate and we put our staff there and we put a good faith effort, we're years in trying that. To start back over in two or three years, is it possible? Yes. Would it be difficult? I think it would be. But it certainly is something that if it wasn't serving the community well and we made a decision to do something different, we would have the ability to do something different.
All right, um. And, you know, I definitely want to thank everybody for all their emails and everything else that they've sent to board and all the concerns and all that, and their true concerns. They're not, you know, pie in the sky and anything else. And and I hope everything's been answered. We tried to get everything back out, answer every question, every concern and every thought. And um, you know, but in in this position, we've got to look at the community as a whole as well and make sure, not that y'all haven't done an excellent job, holding it down, keeping it together, keeping everything in place and where it should have been. Y'all have done an outstanding job, and I applaud you for it. I mean, y'all have worked, you know, with less people and less people. And and I know it's it's not something that y'all have wanted and not something that y'all have said, okay, well, maybe we'll find some people. May, you know, I know you've been trying and everything else, and you supported the community well. And I hope when we, if it goes to York County and we do move, you'll support them and our community as well. Because y'all know us. Y'all are, y'all part of our community. And we'll just be down the street um a few miles. So, anything else anyone wants to add before we move? All right, um, any other questions for staff? I'll need a motion for approval of the ordinance.
Don't move.
Move. Stevens, will you call the roll, please?
Sir, Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
All right, board request and directives. I know that's a hard one to You hang anywhere?
Yes, ma'am.
I was happy and pleased and proud that my young grandson volunteered to come and help Ms. Peg Borman pick up trash at Anderson's Corner. God bless him, and he got bags full. So I just want to give a shout out to Mr. Connor for being a good young citizen.
Had the opportunity with most of the board members, I think, to attend the uh opening of the Tuono Trade Center. And it was a very impressive uh facility, and I think it's going to serve the community extremely well. Uh, very proud that we have that. And of course, all my fellow board members, we had the service awards and kudos to the staff and Mr. uh Stevens for uh setting up a really good one. I think it worked a lot better to have them pick up their certificates outside afterwards. But it was a, it was a very enjoyable ceremony. And then on um that afternoon, I had the opportunity over at Legacy Hall to um be the board rep for a recog- program recognizing our community volunteers. And um, when I got there, they gave me this little program and it's just got two pages of of organizations that uh individuals and organizations that provide volunteer assistance for the community. And it was uh, it was very, very impressive. Uh, and I was very happy that uh I could represent the uh the board there.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah.
And uh I I'll just mention that I I had the opportunity to watch Mr. Eisenhour make that presentation for us. It was a, it was a wonderful uh ceremony and lots of uh awards given. And Peg Borman was recognized uh with with an award uh celebrating her volunteer spirit. Uh, so she was, the, this was the first annual award, and I think it was named the Peg Borman Award. Wasn't that right?
I think so.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Yeah.
So um in the future, other volunteers will will receive that award. And uh I'm sure Peg will continue to be a volunteer. Which reminds me that on Saturday, Ms. Larson and I had the opportunity to attend Arbor Day and Earth Day at Freedom Park, uh where we saw the planting of a tree. Uh, it is a common hackberry. You may not be familiar with the hackberry. It is a great street treat, I'm told. Uh, and for many years, uh as Dr. Donna Ware uh pointed out, uh, it was uh thought to be a member of the elm family. Its primary use was as firewood. Uh, but then later on, they discovered that in fact it is a relation to the cannabis family, which may explain why it's so popular to be burned in fireplaces. Also wanted to to recognize that uh um I had a, I had a meeting here last Thursday night with over two hundred residents from Kings Mill who wanted to come out uh and talk about uh the proposed development plans that Escalante has been, has been um discussing with them. Uh, and I tried to explain as best I could the process that the county would be involved in in considering those plans, where we uh might not be involved very much because of the um by right use of some of that property. But uh it was, I think, exceptionally well attended. And people really were very respectful, very thoughtful in their comments and raised a number of important issues to be addressed. And finally, wanted to congratulate Teresa Said, our uh our board clerk uh for uh the uh election uh to be the Virginia Municipal Clerks Association President for the coming year. Teresa does a great job for us, and I'm sure she'll do the same for the state organization. I'm very proud of her.
I did want to interject that uh Terry McGlynn was actually the recipient of two or three awards, I think, on behalf of Master Gardeners there. So it was a
I was the trailing spouse, right?
Yes, I I could just see the headline at after Saturday, Supervisors McGlynn and Larson in front of a cannabis tree. Yeah, um, yeah.
Well, it's legal now, so
That's right. We just went with it. Um, I appreciate everybody bringing up everything that that we have been doing. I would just add that I spent a quick twenty-two hours in New York City last week um on behalf of Visit Williamsburg. It was, uh, there's, this is something that they've been trying to do since twenty-twenty. Um, everybody remembers what happened there. And that was to introduce this region to um the golf riders. And we had about forty uh members of the media, um golf media that were there. Uh, we had representatives from Ale Works, uh the Meadery. We had um the the soap. I I won't get the name of her business right, but it's Natural Soaps. She was there. We had a representative from Kings Mill, Colonial Williamsburg. And um it was a very successful um exercise and um really was really impressed with the turnout. So hopefully that will result in some increased tourism for us. So um, just get, we were doing everything we can do to to widen the appeal of the area to tourists, so. And then I would just add that on May tenth, uh, the, there will be a Berkeley Community Meeting held. Um, Billsburg has um been so gracious as to allow us to use their shelter there. Um, so I think it's six o'clock, Mr. Stevens. So I hope you'll come out. We will cover the budget, uh, talk about the Marina and then just some other things that are happening in the Berkeley District. And just want to follow up again with um with the uh, a thank you to everybody that put in the uh um effort on on the joint um on what we just passed with the consolidation. I know it's been very tough and there's been um just some very, you know, tough things that have that have been said. And I I get it. It's, like I said before, it's a human exercise, but um I thank you for being very professional, so.
Thank you. We had Employees Day, and that went off very well. Like to thank um Bus Gardens for all their work and allowing us to use the facility, a great facility. And they're a great corporate partner for us. So thank you again for allowing us to have that event there and and we were able to have Big Bird and all that was there. If you missed it, John made great comments about that. He might want to go back and look at that.
His claimed fame.
But yeah, I had a, had a great time. Um, been to um TPO, PDC meetings and and um talked about the six-year plan and where we're at. And even talked about the um pipe project that we're trying to put through or make put through or hopefully it'll go better um in the long run. But um I won't talk very long. I've talked enough today, so uh county administrator report.
Chairman members of the board, I I really just want to say thank you. You you do a lot in the community. But when I ask you to come to something related to employees, you always step up and do that. And our employee service award, I appreciate your flexibility with letting us try new things, letting a horse or a Clydesdale nibble from your ear and those kind of things. And again, I know our employees appreciate it, but I want to say thank you as well. I really do appreciate that, and it means a lot. So just thank you for that.
Well, thank you, Scott. You've really put an emphasis on employee recognition, you and your um leadership team. And and I just really appreciate that, and I appreciate getting to be a part of it. And um gives us all a chance to socialize and and get to know people a little better. And it's, you always bring a fun twist, as you did at the end, and um
The quarters.
The quarters. Thank you.
And we'll let you participate in the quarter game someday.
Yeah, how about here at this meeting sometime?
Yeah, even if we could just not not get the prize, but just blood.
Exactly.
We're not allowed to take the money. All right, next I'll need a motion to go into closed session for consideration of personnel matter, the appointment of individuals to county boards and or commissioners pursuant to section two dot two dash three seven one one A one of the Code of Virginia and pertaining to the adjustments and appeals. Um, discussion of or consideration of disposal of public or held real property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of a public body, especially the property located at two zero five four and two zero seven oh Jamestown Road pursuant to section two dot two dash three seven one one A three of the Code of Virginia.
Don't move.
So move. Hold call, please, sir.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel? Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Roll.
Mr. Chairman, I move to certify that we only spoke about those items we indicated we would speak about in closed session.
Thanks, sir. Roll call.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. I'm looking for a German until 5:00 PM on May 9th, 2023 for a regular meeting.
So moved.
All right. Roll call.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. I'm looking for a German until 5:00 PM on May 9th, 2023 for a regular meeting.
So moved.
All right. Roll call.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. I'm looking for a German until 5:00 PM on May 9th, 2023 for a regular meeting.
So moved.
All right. Roll call.